Good evening, welcome to the December 3rd, 2014, Meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes, sir.
May I say a word here?
Please.
I want everyone to know that Monday was Mr. Lamb's birthday. And I have been doing some research.
That's not what I thought you was going to say.
I know. But I have been doing some research.
You're out of order.
I'm always out of order. And my research shows that dirt is two days older than bog.
Well, that's good to know.
So I'm finished, Mr. Lamb.
And I think you're one year younger than me, so, uh, okay, never mind. We'll move on with the business at hand here. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Young. I appreciate that. Like I said, we do have a quorum present. I don't know how long they'll be here after that, but we'll move on with it. We have four items on the consent agenda today, the first of which is Thistle Down, Section 3, Section 4, final plat for 143 lots on 42.5 acres, zone PUD located along Ashbury Lane and Florence Road. Roy Waldron and Sons is the developer. Mandatory referral sale for McKnight Park, Surpost Properties, City of Murfreesboro Legal Department is applicant. A mandatory referral sublease for the United Way of Rutherford and Cannon Counties and the Chamber of Commerce, City of Murfreesboro Legal Department is applicant. And finally, the mandatory referral to vacate the water and sewer sanitary easement at the Green Meadows Apartments along Warrior Drive. Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department is applicant. Is there any members of the planning commission, any members of the staff, or anybody in attendance in tonight's audience would like any of these items removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion for approval.
Second. Motion is made and seconded several times. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I'm quickly losing control of this group tonight if I ever had it. We have four public hearings scheduled this evening, first of which is a rezoning application for approximately 2.27 acres along Warrior Drive to be rezoned from Commercial Highway to RS-15. Mr. Mohammed Faur is applicant. Ms. Green, I presume you're leading us off tonight?
I am, sir. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider a zoning change request made by Mr. Mohammed Faur. This is for property that consists of two parcels located along the eastern side of Warrior Drive, and I have a map of the properties before you. Those areas are shaded orange on the map before you. You can see that they're located along the eastern side of Warrior Drive, just north of Riverdale High School. Across Warrior Drive are several single-family detached lots. And the owner of this property lives on the, just across Warrior Drive. This property is zone CH, that's Commercial Highway District, as are the properties to the north and to the east of this area. Those lots across Warrior Drive are zoned RS-15 in that single-family residential district. This property was annexed in 2008 and came into the city with an interim zoning of RS-15. In 2012, the city, at its own initiative, included this area with a larger area and zoned it to CH. The area that you see is zone CH on the map before you was zone CH. We included these parcels at that time. Since that time, the property has been purchased by the current owner who feels that it's more feasible to develop this site with two single-family residences as opposed to using commercial or developing it commercially. And that is because this property does have some severe limitations. It's located within the FEMA's flood plain and would have to, of course, comply with those standards. But also, sanitary sewer is not readily available anywhere near this property. The water and sewer department's definition of available is that sewer is either on or adjacent to the property, and it's neither of those, and it's actually located quite some distance away. So the owner doesn't desire to spend the costs associated with extending the sewer to this property. They've reached out to the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department, and the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department have indicated that it could be served with septic tanks as single-family homes, and that's how they'd like to move forward. I did mention that there are limitations on this property. The significant one is the 100-year elevation from the Stones River, and a portion of the property is periodically inundated by flooding water. The owner desires to change the zoning to RS-15 in that single-family residential district. The minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet, and the single-family uses would be permitted by right. Single-family uses are not permitted within the CH zone, which is why he's asking for a zoning change request. If you have any questions about this request, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, you can conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation to City Council.
You may have said this, Ms. Green, but previous to being zoned Commercial Highway, it was zoned RS-15, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any questions, Mrs. Green, before we open the public hearing? In case you haven't been here before, we'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come to the microphone and speak. Please make all your comments to the planning commission. If you would, when you come to the microphone, state your name and give your address, so we'll have it for the record. We'll try to answer any questions you may have at the conclusion of any public hearing that we do. That being said, I'll ask anybody to come forward that 'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from members of the planning commission?
Would the county issue the septic tank permit?
The Rutherford County Health Department will.
There's no other questions. We're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Second public hearing is a rezoning application for approximately 7.12 acres along Bridge Avenue to be rezoned from RM-16 to Commercial Highway. Mr. Stan Norton is applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Next application is for you to consider a zoning change request for property that's located south of Bridge Avenue. This property is located south of Bridge Avenue, just near the intersection of South Malloy Lane and Bridge Avenue, where Bridge is currently located, and near the intersection of Bridge Avenue and Highway 96 or Old Fort Parkway. The property is currently zoned RM-16, and that's multi-family residential district, and permits the development of a multi-family complex with 16 dwelling units per acre. The property adjacent to this, to the east, is zone CH, Commercial Highway District. Property to the north is also zone CH, Commercial Highway District, and the property to the west is zone CH, Commercial Highway District. Properties to the south, just across the West Fork of the Stones River, are zoned HI, and it's Heavy Industrial District, and the property has frontage along South Malloy Lane. The parcel formerly had a house and a small farmstead located upon it. However, since that time, the owner, the former owner has passed, and the structures have been removed from the property. The property has then been purchased by adjoining property owner to the west, which is the property owner associated with the Tennessee Auto Auction and City Auto. They would like to have this property rezoned from RM-16 to CH, Commercial Highway District, with plans to include it as a part of their overall development for the Tennessee Auto Auction and the City Auto. They will, in the future, if this zoning change request is approved, submit site plans for the development of this property. The current zoning would not allow them to use it for vehicle sales or service as they currently use their property. This parcel is significantly affected by the floodway and 100-year floodplain of the Stones River. You can see the southern property line is bordered by the West Fork of the Stones River. Mr. Stan Norton is the applicant, and Mr. Clyde Roundtree is his representative. They're both here this evening. They don't have a presentation prepared. However, they're available if you have questions regarding the zoning change request. And of course, I'm available for questions as well. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation to City Council.
Okay. Any questions before we open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Okay. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Just one question. Ms. Green, how much of this property is affected by the floodplain, 100-year floodplain?
I would say it's about a fifth of the property.
So it drops off pretty good in the back there?
It does drop off. And I think they would like to use most of the property for vehicle storage or inventory storage, and any structures they would have would be located closer to Bridge Avenue.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I feel like it's very good use of the property, and I'll move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next item is annexation petition for approximately 5.01 acres, approximately 3.04 parcel, and approximately 1.97 acres of right-of-way along Salem Highway at Armstrong Valley Road. Mr. Sarvin Perchel is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our third public hearing this evening is for you to consider a petition for annexation, which has been made by the property owner. Other property identified in orange on the map that's on the screen before you. This property is currently developed with a convenience market and is zoned for commercial purposes under the county zoning regulations. The area that's shaded blue is additional area that's been included in the study, and that's right-of-way. So we've included approximately 791 linear feet of Highway 99 right-of-way in the annexation, so as to not have a gap in the right-of-way of New Salem Highway. So the area being studied for annexation includes the orange parcel and the blue. Blue is the right-of-way, and the orange is the convenience market. This property is located south of New Salem Highway or Highway 99 and west of Armstrong Valley Road, just at the intersection of Armstrong Valley Road and Highway 99. You can see Veterans Parkway is located further to the southwest of the study area. This annexation is coming before you because the property owner has petition for annexation. He desires to benefit from city services such as sanitary sewer, fire, and police protection. The, I mentioned the property is already developed with a convenience market and is zoned for commercial purposes in the county. There is no companion zoning change request with this application because our zoning ordinance reads that if a property is zoned for commercial purposes in the county, if it's annexed, it comes into the city with an interim zoning of CL, and that's Commercial Local District. The CL district would permit the use that's existing by right, so they haven't made any application to change the zoning of the property as of yet, since that interim or default zoning will suit their purposes for now. In order to affect this annexation, no additional parcels need, property owners need to be included in the study. I've provided you with a plan of services prepared by staff that outlines what services the city can provide and a timeframe for when we can provide those. The area that, on the map that you had looked at before, that's shaded yellow, is current city limits, and so the property is contiguous with current city limits along its eastern and southern property lines. The city will be able to provide services upon the effective date of annexation, and if you have any questions about this annexation, I'd be glad to answer them for you either before or after the public hearing. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation regarding this annexation study.
Okay. Any questions? This is an inquisitive bunch tonight. So if there's no questions, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against this proposal. Is this working?
No rush.
Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions by members of the planning commission?
No questions. Chairman Lamb, I'll make a motion. Will you approve?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The final public hearing of the evening is a PRD amendment and rezoning application for approximately 10.04 acres along Joby Jackson Parkway to be removed from the Baskin Wood PRD and rezoned to RM-16. Mr. Jimmy Allen is applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our third and final public hearing this evening is for you to consider a zoning change request for property that's located south of Joby Jackson Parkway. This portion of Joby Jackson Parkway is currently being reconstructed by the city and was formerly known as County Farm Road, and some of you may still be familiar with that old name, but the name has changed to Joby Jackson Parkway. The property is shaded blue in the map before you, and it shows the area that's being requested to be zoned, rezoned. The entire, this property, the blue area and the area between the blue and Joby Jackson Parkway are zoned PRD, and that's Planned Residential District, and it was zoned PRD in 2005 for the development of the Villas of Baskin Wood condominium. The area consisting that is not included in the blue area is currently developed with some condominiums, but the rest of the property did not continue developing since that time. The area that's shaded blue will be a separate development, separate from the Villas of Baskin Wood, and you can see that there's a finger that leads from the blue parcel to Joby Jackson Parkway that's 50 feet wide, and I think it's a little bit wider, just near the intersection of Joby Jackson Parkway, to allow that to not be a landlocked parcel and to have access to, of course, the plat will have to be recorded later, but access to Joby Jackson Parkway. The original Baskin Wood plan development consisted of 16.4 acres and included 158 townhomes slash condominium units. This plan is not only to rezone the blue area from PRD to RM-16, but is also to amend the Baskin Wood PRD for the remaining PRD. And the plan to amend the PRD will reduce the total number of units from 158 to just include the first two phases, which are 62 units on 6.36 acres. Adjustments will be made to the PRD so that it can remain independent and separate, so it will not be, these two properties will be separate developments. The plan calls for the remaining 10.04 acres to be rezoned to RM-16, and RM-16 is multi-family residential district. It allows the development of multi-family units with a density of 16 dwelling units per acre. The, and just doing simple math, they could have approximately 160 dwelling units on that 10.04 acres of the property that's asking to be rezoned. They may not be able to do that many units, depending on how much they have to take out for streets and stormwater, but just so you can get the, an estimate of what could be done there, it would be approximately 160 dwelling units. The 50-foot finger that leads from this property to Joby Jackson Parkway is slightly wider at the intersection of Joby Jackson Parkway so that it can allow for a three-lane cross-section in the future for the future access drive. Since the time Baskin Wood has been approved, there have been significant changes in the area, namely, the Walmart Supercenter is being constructed adjacent to this property in the area zoned PCD. It's between, between this parcel and South Church Street or Highway 231, which turns into Shelbyville Parkway nearby. Joby Jackson Parkway, of course, is nearing completion to connect to South Church Street and I-24, and I believe that should be open pretty soon if it hasn't already. The street's been improved to have turn lanes, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks along Joby Jackson Parkway. Formerly, it was a two-lane ditch section street. And then, like many other developments that got underway before the recession began, Baskin Wood has not recovered, and there's no one interested in continuing with that planned development. Mr. Matt Taylor is representing the applicant, and there's some additional materials in your agenda packet from Mr. Taylor. He's outlined a letter, also bullet-pointing the changes that is being requested. Mr. Taylor, I'll invite him to the lectern at this time and go through some of those changes, which I think I highlighted for you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Matt Taylor of SCC. I'm accompanied by the applicant, Mr. Jimmy Allen, as well as Mr. John Arney of the Parks Group, who represents Mr. Allen. As Ms. Green stated, Baskin Wood did get underway just before the recession started to take its full grip and before it could really get any momentum, develop a real identity. It fell victim to that recession, and unlike many of our other properties and projects in town, it has really not recovered. We've not seen somebody that's wanted to come in and pick up the pieces and try to start that again. And so, in an effort to help the project, the remaining land here get back on its feet, we're seeking this PRD amendment and the accompanying rezoning to the back. The changes to the PRD, as Ms. Green said, are outlined in my letter. It effectively reduces the amount of area from 16.4 to just over six acres in size, and that area is only inclusive of the area that you essentially see built out there now. With this reduction in area, we've also reduced the number of allowed townhomes from 158 to 62. The, the original PRD had a side setback on the eastern boundary of about 50 feet from the side of those units to that property line. Here, we are requesting that we reduce that to 10 feet. It's no closer to the residents that are on the eastern side, just closer to the proposed property line. The, and then essentially the same thing in the back. We had about a 30-foot rear setback to the properties to the south. We're requesting that to be 12 from the existing units or where they're proposed to be to our proposed property line. Again, we've reduced the number of visitor parking spaces associated with what's constructed out there versus what was proposed over the entire site. And then, the rest of the revisions are primarily associated with the finger, as Ms. Green stated, or the access drive for this rear portion on the eastern part of Baskin Wood. Instead of just being a circular drive, it would actually extend out to County Farm Road or Joby Jackson now. Any developer of this RM-16 portion would be responsible for either reconstructing that part or making revisions or completely constructing a new road there, but maintaining the access back into Baskin Wood, so there's good emergency access points there. We will also maintain the landscape buffer that's already constructed there. Any material that is dead or deficient at the time of the construction of that road will be replaced or added to with any development in the back. Then, of course, we'll continue that same buffer along the whole eastern as well as southern boundary. I do not anticipate that it would be needed on the western side because that is the Walmart project. And then, during the original rezoning, the neighbors downstream were extremely concerned about stormwater. Stormwater will remain a very high point of concern during any sort of construction plan design. I believe there's four small detention ponds constructed already on the project. If those are modified, or as those would be modified for the access drive on the eastern side, that area or volume would be replaced or enhanced for the future development as well. Myself or the applicant would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If there's no questions about the planning commission, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions by the planning commission?
I'm just making sure. You said we're reducing the rear setback to 12 feet? Did I hear you say that?
Yes, ma'am. The original plan, which I've got some copies of, if you'd like to see it, there's smaller versions, but essentially, between our most southerly units and the southern property line, there was a buffer, a 12-foot wide buffer, and then an access drive, and then our unit. So that's where our 30 feet came from. Here, for the PRD, our rear setback, I'm saying is changing to 12 feet because where our proposed property line would fall in relation to where those building pads would be. So it's not getting any closer to the people to the south, it's just where that rear, where that new property line would be on our property.
And so, from the existing buildings that are there?
Mm-hmm.
How close is the, the property line, the new property line that's now going to cut through the middle? That's what I was trying to get the, look at the map again, make sure I'm thinking is south?
About 12 feet, yes, ma'am.
Where it's cutting through the middle?
Yes, ma'am.
And so...
And that property line will become a front for the new unit, so the, so the rear of these units will be about 12 feet from the new property line. However, the new units that we will be built will be 30 feet back, so there'll be a total of 42 feet separation, at least, building separation because of the property line.
And so, the front of these units will be looking at the back of the, what's the current PRD, so the front of the apartments will look at the back of the PRD. Is there a road in front of the apartment?
Actually, the, the way that the Baskin Wood townhomes are, really, the front will be facing into the RM-16 property.
Okay, so they, they face the back?
Yes, ma'am. You really have a rear, rear loaded with no front drive here, and so it really fronts on what is now an existing detention pond or green area.
Okay. And so, they'll end up with 40, 42 feet in between the buildings?
At least.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Taylor, you mentioned the emergency access road on the backside of the current PRD. Is, is there going to be one, or would there be multiple accesses going through there? And I guess my concern would be the cut-through part, but the, how accessible is this road going to be, I guess?
The road will be accessible. You talking about the new road that, we're talking about extending on the eastern side?
No, no. I was of the impression that you made the comment about an emergency exit from the current PRD.
Oh, yes, sir. Right now, if, if you look at the plan that we sent, this eastern drive currently, it just, it loops around right there. And so, instead of providing these as dead ends, we're wanting to tie in, so it provides good access for...
So you think there'll be multiple roads coming off the back of the PRD?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Or in the middle of the PRD, I would say.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Smutman, I would add that the, the buyer of those building pads that's getting ready to build those condominium pads has been made very much aware and participated in the discussions of formulating this plan. So he's, he's comfortable with that. He understands it's going to happen. So any future residents will be on notice. It's not like changing something right in front of their house. They, the builder of those will be able to help them understand what they're getting into when they purchase their units.
Okay. Yeah, you obviously understood my concern because, I mean, they're, they're looking at a retention pond now, and they're going to have a road basically come in into the front of their property now.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
In the big picture of this, this is just a continuation of the housing that was been planned well before the recession hit in Salem. I mean, it's changing, but it's not changing.
It's the same type of housing, so what is existing is considered multi-family. And so they could choose to either do condominiums, which are multi-family form of housing, or they could do a different style, which would be your typical garden-style apartment. I'm not sure if Mr. Taylor knows what they're, what they're hoping to do, but it was, multi-family was permitted before, and this change would continue to allow multi-family?
My only client right now is the applicant, and so, and he, he's not intending to develop it himself. I think he's looking to try to sell it, so I do not know what would be built there.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no other questions from the planning commission, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. Move on to what I've referred to for many years as Mr. Adelot's favorite portion of the agenda, staff reports and other business. We have one item under that tonight. Consider the proposed resolution regarding what constitutes approval for purposes of establishing vested rights to development standards under the Vested Property Rights Act of 2014. Mr. Adelot, I guess this is the last time I get to calling you for a agenda item, so...
Yes, sir, and I'm going to be very brief with this, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ives.
Okay.
The state legislature has adopted laws regarding vesting of development rights, and Mr. Ives is proposing something that will help to make it more administratable in the coming year. So with that, Mr. Ives, you will present.
Thank you, Mr. Adelot. Yes, the legislature did enact this vesting, Vested Property Rights Act during this last term. This is something the homebuilder community has been seeking for some time. It went back and forth with lots of people and lots of revisions and lots of conversation, and it was passed in the form that I included with the memo to you. The, there are basically two sections of the, of the act. The first section applies to counties, and the second section applies to municipalities. They're virtually identical. If there are any differences, I haven't looked that hard for them because I'm not that concerned about what the county's provisions are. what the county's provisions are. The, I guess, the idea behind the act is to assure a developer, a builder, that once he's got a plan approved, he knows he's going to get to live by that plan for some period of time. The period of time was something hotly debated, and it's basically come down to this. When a preliminary plan is approved, it's good for three years. If the developer, I'll just use developer across the board, whoever, whatever it is, if he gets permits and moves forward with plans and is able to start construction during that three, in fact, I think if he does any of those things during that three-year period, he has another two years of vested rights after the end of the three years. So if he gets his, if he takes his next step, say, in year two, the two-year doesn't start at that point, it starts still at the end of his original three. So it effectively gives five years of protection. When, if he's actually started construction during the five-year period, then his rights are vested until the project is complete with a maximum limitation of 10 years. If the project is in multiple phases, then each phase will have its own vesting period, and the maximum a multi-phase project can last is 15 years. So whatever the development standards are on the day of approval of a preliminary plan will stay in effect for up to 15 years. That zoning changes, setback changes, things of that nature, will stay what they were on the date of the preliminary approval. There is a provision for the circumstance which we do face from time to time, where either the federal government or the state government basically mandates that we change something. If we're mandated to change that, then, of course, that is, that change will go into effect. The developers' vested rights don't last. And one of the more recent and large examples is where the state, through the federal government, has mandated a number of stormwater protection requirements, stream bank protection areas, things of that nature. And we enacted those at basically being told to. So if something like that changes, if the stream bank protection, if we're told to change that from 50 feet to 100 feet, that change would be applicable as soon as it's enacted. But other things do stay in effect. Now, there's still some discussion about what this means in terms of building codes. A true life safety issue is supposed to be able to be changed, particularly if it's mandated by the state or federal government. But whether all of the changes that come in a building code will be grandfathered against, we're just not sure yet. The state, the act does not give us a great deal of flexibility. We're tied pretty closely to it. What it did include is that either by ordinance change or by resolution, the cities can establish what constitutes approval, and can establish what kinds of development plans, and I use that without capital letters in a very broad sense, constitute development plans for this purpose that create vesting rights. The resolution as drafted primarily addresses the, what would be considered preliminary plans. I think there's not a lot of question. A final plat is a final plat. Frankly, I do think, as I was looking here just earlier this evening, I think we're gonna want to add a couple of things to this resolution before it goes to council. And by the way, we're not putting it to council tomorrow night. We wanted to, we planned to submit on the 11th, so that if there were any additional changes, or some tweaks we wanted to do to it, we'd have the time to do that. But for instance, I think we need to add that a site plan is approved on the effective date, or the date of adoption of the minutes. Not, for instance, if you approve the site plan tonight, the approval date wouldn't be tonight. The approval date would be the date that you adopt the minutes, which include the motion that approved that site plan. That gives us an opportunity to discover over the next week, or two, or three, or however it might be, that, oops, there's a problem here. We need to come back and readdress this. Same with when council action, it'll be approved on the effective date of the ordinance, when council. So let me just kind of run over what we have here. And the resolution, we dropped it, or we drafted on page one, down in the middle, section one, we really have two kinds of master plans. We have master plans that are prepared under the zoning ordinance, in the subdivision regulations, rather, and those will be deemed to be approved on the date that the minutes are approved, covering the meeting where the motion was made. Master plan for development within GDO overlay, which is a somewhat different master plan, again, will be deemed approved on the date that the minutes are approved, that include that motion for approval. One that requires approval by city council, which would be a portion of a planned development, which is an effective zoning in a zoning ordinance, as I said, that will become effective on the date that the ordinance becomes effective. So we wouldn't necessarily wait till the next, till the minutes are approved, but it's got an effective, there'll be an effective date of the ordinance, which still gives us probably a couple of weeks. I think these are mostly 15-day effective dates, that if we could, if we should happen to discover that there's, we missed something and there's a problem, we would have a chance to correct that. There are two situations where site plans can be approved by other than planning commission or city council, and one is when the site plan itself is approved as part of a special use permit by the BZA. And for instance, if someone comes to the BZA for a special use permit to set up a hot dog stand during certain weekends on a gas station parking lot, that BZA submittal will have effectively a site plan with it. It'll show where the trailer's gonna sit, how the seating will be, if any, how they'll handle trash, and that sort of thing. When the BZA, when the minutes are effective for BZA's approval of that site plan, then that site plan is effective and the vested rights are established. If, for instance, the BZA grants approval for a group assembly use in a residential subdivision, that is not gonna create any vested rights other than for the group assembly use, because that site plan is not, won't be approved by BZA. That site plan will come to planning commission for full review and approval. The other one is that in a, I think mostly it'll be in a single-family building permit, a house permit that's issued by the building codes department, often has a site plan component affected in terms of where the house is gonna sit, and where it's, you know, what other things are gonna be placed on the lot. So the approval of one of those site plans does not come back to planning commission or council. It's, will be effective upon the issuance of the building permit by building codes department. One that we need to look at, and I expect it will be coming back in the near future, with an amendment to our, probably to the GDO section of the ordinance. We have people come in from time to time with nothing in writing, or sometimes something scratched on the back of an envelope or a napkin, and sometimes it's a little more than that, but it does not contain the detailed elements that are required for a site plan. And we want to make sure, and we are attempting to do that here in section seven of this resolution, we want to make sure that when the planning director says, yeah, that looks like a good idea, that that doesn't create vested rights. So except for the limited situations where BZA, codes department, or planning director on some final plats that don't require, that are for small matters, other than that, nothing that staff does will constitute an approval. It has to be approved more formally. And there have been occasions when ideas have been brought to the planning commission that have nowhere near reached the point of a master plan as required by the zoning ordinance, but they're discussed with planning commission. They're concepts, and again, there may not be any kind of drawing. We want to make clear that we're not gonna be asking the planning commission to vote, yea or nay, on something at that stage, and that any comments that might be made during a meeting, if someone says, gee, yeah, this looks, this looks good. I hope that you can get this done, something like that is not gonna constitute approval for the purpose of creating vested rights to development. I think it's gonna require some additional record-keeping on our parts to make sure, more sure that we've got a record of what's in place on the day of approval. I think some, many of the anticipated problems with this will go away by the fact that things change over time, because the other thing that allows us to cancel any of the vested rights is if the applicant comes in and wants to change things. So when the market changes, and whatever, you don't want RS15 anymore, you want RS10, you come in as an applicant, as a developer, and want to change something, we then have the right to say, fine, but you're subject to today's standards, not yesterday's. And the mere fact that particularly long-term developments, times will change, things will change, the economy will change, tastes will change, and you know, I think the need for the developer to adapt to a moving market will avoid many of the, I guess, the anticipated horrors of 15-year vested rights for development standards. I hope I've sufficiently confused you all tonight, but we'll try to answer any questions if I don't.
Mr. Ives?
I would refer you to page, it's the second to the last page of the act itself. Page 11 is up on the top right-hand corner. I highlighted that part, and that is where essentially the legislature said that the cities are free to determine what constitutes a preliminary plan. However, a preliminary plan which includes any of these is a preliminary plan. So they, after saying we could determine it, they pretty well tied our hands. We don't have a whole lot. We did consider quite a bit of, you know, do we need to change our whole process? Do we need to look at modifying substantially how we do business? And we decided that we don't want to do that. We don't think it's necessary. We need to adjust a little bit in terms of, to make sure we don't inadvertently approve something and inadvertently grant vested rights. But we just have to understand that there's a potential for long-term vested rights whenever a plan is actually approved. So, now, any questions?
Okay. Would the vested rights stay with the preliminary plan even though the developer may change hands, meaning you have a new developer involved, or once you have a new developer involved, all bets are off, and the vested rights are gone?
I think the vested rights will run with the land.
Okay.
So a new developer doing the same thing will be vested with what was, with what the prior developer was. Again, if he wants to change something, you know, as we saw tonight, we listened tonight, a plan is being substantially changed. Well, if we had, if this law had been in effect a year ago, whatever vested rights were attached to that PRD would remain probably with the PRD, because I don't believe it was being changed a whole lot. It was being reduced, but I think in the plan itself, I don't think it was changing. But certainly, the new rezoned property to the south of that, the southern part of that original PRD would start over. Their vested rights would be starting here in the future.
Any other questions? What kind of action do you need from us, Chairman?
I believe a recommendation for approval by council was subject to changes that might be, you know, minor changes that might be added, made or added by the city attorney would be appropriate.
Any comments? Now, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval to the city council, allowing for minor adjustments by the legal staff.
Second. Motion is made. Seconded, all in favor, indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That completes the staff reports of our business. Before we adjourn tonight, I would be remiss if I did not make comment about a very historic event that's happening tonight to the planning department, the city of Murfreesboro. It's not often that we have a 30-year director of one of our major departments in the city see his last meeting coming up tonight with the planning department. That's exactly what's happening. After 30 years of distinguished service, Mr. Adelot, this is his last meeting with the planning commission tonight. So for those of us, Mr. Young and I have particularly been around for about 24 of those years, in which he's been planning director for the last 24-plus years. So we've enjoyed quite a period of growth and sustainment during that time. I can't spout the figures out. I was gonna ask Mrs. Green to give me the totals of the number of public hearings and meetings that he's attended, and she said they just simply didn't have time to go back 30 years and do that. Thousands, and there's no telling how many meetings in his office with all types of citizens and developers. And I cannot, I cannot fathom how many meetings you've gone through. And I'll say this, there's probably not one person that has been more influential on the growth, planning, and development of Murfreesboro, Joseph Adelot. And prosperity, all that lends to our great prosperity and a wonderful community to live in. And he has just single-handedly guided that growth in a very, very admirable way. And what a, many obstacles that he's faced, he's done such a tremendous job on it. And with my comments, I'd like for each of you to comment about Mr. Adelot's service to the city. And we can't say enough, but I would like each planning commission member to have something to say.
I'd like to say thank you for a job well done, the relationship that we've developed over the last 13 years. And again, thanks.
I have known Joseph not only on the planning commission, but also on the Main Street Board. And I think that he's not only worn a hat with respects to planning commission, but he's worn a hat for the betterment of the community, and not just on the Main Street Board. But his civic involvement has been great. It's also led to a lot of, we'll call it prosperity, especially in the downtown area, because he did have a voice being the planning director, but also we used his guidance as part of the Main Street Board to help us through and keep the downtown area vital. I just want to compliment on the input and the time that he spent with that over the years.
Counselor Smutman?
And I'll follow up on the very positive comments that in the last three years that Joseph and I have worked together, he's been very honest and forthcoming with information, and tried to answer all the questions, and helped me a lot to understand how property has developed and how our city has grown. And he has done a very, a very difficult job with a situation that oftentimes everybody on both sides aren't gonna be happy. And he's managed it well, and I certainly want to wish him the best in his future endeavor, and if he decides on retirement, all the best.
Mr. Wade?
I think what stands out with Mr. Adelot is the history he knows about Murfreesboro. And you just can't take that for granted. And I think when you look at Murfreesboro and the stamp that he's put on our city, he's done a fantastic job. When you're talking about prosperity, you think about Joseph Adelot. So... So congratulations, and you did an outstanding job.
Mr. Drives?
Well, Mr. Aylott, I've said many times, and I, you know, I'm not too good at all this kind of stuff. I'm kind of mean up here sometimes, but these kind of things really bother me. But I have certainly enjoyed the time I've had on the planning commission with you. I think you have just an amazing vision for our, our city and everything you've done for us over these last 30 years, and I have been around for about 16 of those. I appreciate all the training that you gave to me along the way and continue to give on a regular basis when I kind of lose my way. But I'm very proud of everything that we have been able to accomplish under your direction and guidance, and I think and hope that you'll always be very proud of what you've done for our city and for us. It's been wonderful, and we appreciate it.
Probably as the longest, as the longest member of this particular board that I've served with, Mr. Aylott, I actually served with Mr. Aylott before he was the planning director, when he was just a planner. And Mr. Wade's comment was, was very right to the point. We're going to miss the historical aspect of Mr. Aylott. He knows what happened in 1987 and 94 and 100 and 2001 where we won't remember.
And he can remember it.
He can remember that. So that's going to be almost impossible to replace. But the thing that I think we're going to miss the most is the vision that he had for the city. You know, he travels, he goes to many different parts of the country, he looks at different projects in different parts of the country, and he's brought that vision back to the city. He guided us through the Gateway Project, which probably be the single biggest project we've done over a 10-year period, and it's just now getting started. But the vision that Mr. Aylott had for this city is going to be remarkably hard to replace. And I am proud to serve with you, and I'm proud to call you a friend.
Ms. Drives?
A very short comment. I've been working with Joseph now for about nine and a half years since I joined the city, and really, all I can say is I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss you a lot.
Ms. Green or Mr. Arnellus?
I can't turn down an opportunity to speak again. I'll have the cable department go ahead and put a photograph on the screen. I've learned from the best, haven't I? If I can get them to pull it up.
This is great.
And I want you to know that Mr. Aylott's talents are not going to be wasted. He's going to a place called Aylottville, and hopefully his, his, he'll remember his civic responsibility, and he'll help make that a prosperous place to be as well. Here's a photograph of him, I think, visiting his, his future place of influence.
Arnellus, would you?
I'm probably the youngest member here, but I think I was the last person Mr. Aylott has hired, and so I haven't had enough time to actually evolve with how he has trained Margaret Ann perhaps, but I think he trained Margaret Ann pretty well, so she'll still be around, so I'm pretty sure she'll train me a little bit with how she learned from Mr. Aylott, so going to miss him.
Mr. Bromley?
I've been here working with Mr. Aylott since 2001, and I really wanted to thank him for the opportunity that he gave me 13 years ago, and I can't say enough about how much I've learned from him and how much I've enjoyed working for him and with him, and it's just been a pleasure these last 13 years.
Thank you. Any other members of the staff? Carolyn, Rom, Robert, Sam, anybody?
Mr. Lewis is coming to the lectern.
Mr. Lewis, you cannot refuse this opportunity.
Lucky guy called out.
Take your time, Robert.
He's fast as a kid.
Well, I was hired 14 years ago by Mr. Aylott, and I have learned to continue my planning history with him. He, like has been told earlier, he's, he has, he knows a tremendous amount of history for Murfreesboro, and he has been able to pass that along to a lot of people in Murfreesboro, and I think there's going to be very few people that is not going to miss the abilities that he has. So the entire city of Murfreesboro should thank him, and I know, I appreciate what he's done for the city, and I know everybody else does too, so we're going to miss him.
Amen. Anybody else? I know the city council has plans for tomorrow night for you, Mr. Aylott, so I think you better be prepared.
Well, I always try to be prepared. I want to, I want to say a couple of words, and you know, it's very, very flattering when people speak of you, as you all have spoken of me, and it's very touching, too. But I'm going to keep a smile and not, not shed a tear, because this is a happy occasion. Certainly, it's not been single-handed. I've had a lot of good people to work with. When you approach retirement, you have got there with the help of a lot of people, and I got here to this day, to this meeting, to this opportunity to speak, after a lot of people helped me along the way. As a manager, I had a lot of opportunity to recruit employees, and they're going to be here a long time. I had an opportunity to greet, appoint these to the planning commission. I didn't have the opportunity to appoint them. I didn't need to, because my philosophy was whoever is appointed, it's my job to work with them and to make sure that they're able to function effectively as planning commission members. I've never forgotten that responsibility as planning director. So I had good people to work with, and you all have been good. You all have had a vision, too. You have seen my vision, sometimes you embraced it, sometimes you didn't understand it, sometimes you had a different vision, and that's part of, part of the planning process. Planning is easy in a community like Murfreesboro, when you keep a couple of principles in mind. Treat everybody equally as you can, because we're a monopoly. The customer has no other choice. They can't go to the next Mur, city of Murfreesboro, because we are the only one. Treat your customers with respect if you, to the degree that you can, and you always can, even when you dread it. You must do that. Train your employees well and give them an opportunity. And even tonight, I stepped back and let my assistant, Ms. Ely, do the heavy lifting because I didn't have to. I paid my dues and I respected a long time. She and the community benefited more for her doing it. I've had confidence in the people I've worked with who've worked for, under my supervision. Give them a chance. They would do great things if given the opportunity, and they have not let me down. I can think of none of my staff ever letting me down, always. It just impresses me how well they do, and I think a lot of it is because I have confidence in them, and I tell them that. They know it, but they don't let me down, and I'm proud of that. I have confidence in you all. As a planning commission, you all haven't let the community down. It's a hard decision. I've sat up here with you, and I've sat up here, I had an opportunity to speak on it, but I didn't have to vote, and you all did. I didn't have to show all my cards, but you all did, and you have to live with it, too. And you have to, you have to, you have to greet people Sunday morning at church and be proud of the decision you made, and I'm proud of you for that. Murfreesboro is going to be a place that survives. I can paint a vision of you for the future that I've thought of very much. Murfreesboro is going to be a vibrant place in the future. It will be. The foundation is here. I've participated in watching it be created. Today is the foundation for tomorrow. The last 20 years are the foundation for the next 100. And that's, that is going to be true, and you, there will be people who will reflect upon that statement in the future and think he was right. We have a firm, stable foundation here. There will be times when we have problems, but they will be overcome. There'll be times that we have indecision, but there will be debate and there will be choice, and the leadership will make good decisions. So I may be retiring, but I am confident that Murfreesboro is going to remain a very good place regardless. And one last thing that I want to leave you with. I was talking with Margaret Ann a couple of months ago, and she said, you know, there's a philosophy that a person is never gone until the last hand, time their name is spoken. I am confident that I will be here a long time.
And you, Mr. Aylott, I think his immediate plans are to retire to his farm in Hickman County where he has a beautiful spread, and he's an avid cattle farmer, fisherman and hunter in that area, but one thing about it, you may be able to leave and you may be able to change your cell phone number, but we'll still know where to find you. Thank you once again for everything.
Thank all of you all.
If there's no further comments, we stand adjourned.